About the time for phasing in all of the utilities, is that just on a need, by need basis?
At this point, it depends exactly on, it kind of depends exactly on where you are and what your current water service area is. But at this point, we don't have improvements foreseen for this area other than what's been identified to date for sewer capital improvements and some modest water improvements. If, at the time, the council decides to take those on, then we'll begin planning those in our whole course. But at this time, the council, we don't have those improvements identified.
Before you go, what is that, planning and zoning, what if they propose that property to be zoned once it becomes no more agriculture? Is it going to be zoned as residential, business, industrial, retail? What does that zone that, so when they decide? Is that the top of the pyramid where they can do anything, or is it the bottom of the pyramid that can't do nothing, so pet a house?
So, at the time that it's actually annexed, the council will take action to zone that property. So it'll get an initial zoning at that point. So what we have is, what we worked on with Mr. Vipon and the Planning and Zoning Commission and for our councils was a future land use plan which says generally, we think the 181 corridor in this area should be commercial use, so...
How can you zone it commercial if it's residential? Can't take matters in your own hands?
The owner can request it to be commercial?
If the owner requests, but still you still have to get with all your neighbors to make sure that everybody is on the same page like he is. Is that correct?
You don't have to, he can...
You just have to, you have to.
No, in terms of being on the same page, I'm saying that he would, his neighbors are going to have a voice in that decision at that hearing and at that council action plan, but...
So, if all the neighbors sign that they don't want a restaurant there, they can still have a restaurant?
If, well, we're starting to get into application of the zoning code and...
He just asked that question?
If, if the owners of 20% or more of the land area within 200 feet of the rezoning, as it's proposed, object in writing, then it requires a three-quarters vote of the council to be able to pass it. So it doesn't mean that it stops it outright.
So what do you mean, the neighbors do not have any whatsoever's authority to the council?
No, they do have some power because they have the power of forces supermajority.
Say all of them decide that they don't want a restaurant there, the council decides they want it, so it doesn't make a difference to them?
If that's the way the council voted, then the council has the discretionary power to change the zone. As long as they follow the process, they can change the zoning, and as long as they stay consistent with the future land use plan, then the council can do that. Now, how the council uses that power is up to, up to the council.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Flogi.
Council members and staff, please bear with me, I'm pretty hard of hearing, I've got hearing aids, but they don't always work. I'm Fred Waters, and I'm here tonight to express great displeasure at the annexation plan of City Forest regarding my property, which involves 12.23 acres. It's ID 10321. It's the last piece of property on Highway 181 North. After that, there are no other annexations. And I purchased this property over 25 years ago to utilize as I and my family's fault fit, with no one telling me what to do with this property. Now, the city is already doing this. They're, they're saying either sign the non-annexation agreement or the city will annex you very soon anyway. So, that's not much of a choice. Either sign the non-annexation document, or the city's going to annex you anyway. I already have water for my cattle on the property, I have sheriff protection. I have, this is one thing that really bothers me, I have the right, I have seven children, four of them are boys, and they are hunters. They're dove hunters, and they have hunted on this property for the 25 more years that I've owned the property. As I understand it, whether the property is annexed or not annexed, it's in ag right now. But as I understand it, my children will lose the right to hunt on this property, right? Either by non-annexation or by annexation, either one. I'll lose my right for the kids to hunt on it. Is that correct or incorrect?
So, if you are, you come into the city limits, you would be subject to the regulation that prohibits discharge of a firearm within the city limits. Now, whether that exemption is something that can be contemplated within the annexation agreement, the non-annexation agreement, I'd have to defer to Mr. Hug on that question.
In my opinion, it would require ordinance change, but that could be discussed as well to allow for an exemption to be covered out of there.
But it would be an ordinance change and not something as done as part of the agreement?
Correct.
What is the answer? Well, I'll...
But the answer is, is you would not be allowed to, but there is the possibility that the council could decide to change the rule about it that would allow a situation like yours to be able to go forward.
Okay.
That's a possibility, that's what Mr. Hug is suggesting.
Okay, this, this property is the very last property on Highway 181, on the east side of Highway 181 that will be annexed. Across the county road is not being annexed, so I'm the last piece of property. I'm messed up by the road. I was on the wrong side of the road with annexation. Okay, my questions are, number one, does taxation, in other words, I've got ag which has a production value to the property, but if I lose my ag exemption, then it becomes the value of the property. What is the taxation, when is the taxation began? In other words, if I sign the non-annexation to keep my ag, when will the taxation on that property by the, for city taxes begin?
So if you sign the agreement, then you're not going to be subject to city taxes. If you choose not to sign the agreement, then we would annex you, but that doesn't take away your ag exemption at the same time? Doesn't negate our agreement?
Okay, so if I sign the annexation, the non-annexation agreement, there will be no city tax, is that what you're telling me?
Correct, until there's a change in use on the property, which would be covered in that, so if you decided that you wanted to sell the frontage on 181 to a developer, then that would immediately be annexed into the city and would be subject to city taxes, but as long as you maintain the current use, it would be exempted on there?
No city taxes at all?
For the duration of the agreement, until there's a change of use.
Okay. I'm already 85, so I'm not going to live too long, but anyway. My children, I've got seven children, five of them are boys, and they love to hunt dove, and that's all they do out there is hunt during the dog season, hunt. What I would like, I've got all the benefits on the property now that I need, but it appears to me that I will receive nothing from my city taxation whatsoever. Can you explain to me what advantage I am going to receive by annexation? I know y'all are trying to control something, control what's going on on this corridor, on this annexation, but what am I going to receive that I'm already not receiving? I've got sheriff protection, I've got water to the cattle on the property, I've got everything already. So what am I going to receive when it's annexed? What, what benefits am I going to receive by annexation? None probable.
With city protection, city water, city sewer, everything, once you change? Once you change, I guess, the city sewer, city water, city everything, all the amenities?
I've got Oak Hill water supply right now, feeding my property for my cattle. I have no sewers, I have sheriff protection, I have fire protection, I have everything, so when when I sign this non-annexation agreement or I'm, or I'm annexed against my will, what benefit am I going to, what benefit am I going to receive from all of that? I'm going to pay taxes of about $300, $400 if I lose my ag exemption. So what benefit am I going to get for those $300, $400 taxes? What am I going to receive in return?
If your ag exempt, you still, you don't have to pay city taxes if your ag is exempt, isn't that correct?
Right, under the, under the agreement, but what you would get is, I know you're at the far edge of it, so a lot of things like the water benefits, and you're already on Oak Hill, so you don't get the, the water benefit, and you don't need the sewer benefit right now, but what, what you would get is, I believe in faster response times because Florisville Police Department could respond. I know you said you have the sheriffs over there, but they have a limited number of deputies for the entire county, so you have FPD who's right down the road. Eventually, as the city grows, if we get to the point where we're required to have a fire department in the city, you would have the benefits of that fire department, same thing with N-GMS services, they come up for there. So I understand where you're coming from, and a lot of it seems like future benefit, but as part of the city, when the city gets those benefits, you would be automatically entitled to those as well?
Okay. I'm a little bit confused too, and I've, I've got two documents. I've got a document of May 11, 2017, states that I must have my ag exemption, non-annexation agreement to the city by August the 1st, 2017. Then, I also have a letter from the city that has a statement that says, "It's frequently asked question sheet, it's there with no active schedule until August or September 219." Now, which one is correct? You'll have to have my non-annexation agreement in by the 17th, and yet y'all are not going to take any action until August or September 219. Which one of those sheets are correct?
Both of them are. So the, the non-annexation development agreement needs to be negotiated in with the city by, by August of 2017, but the actual annexation itself, whether you sign that agreement or not, won't occur until, I believe it's 2019.
Oh, okay, so there, if I sign it, that it won't do anything until 2019?
If you don't sign it, it wouldn't do anything anyway until 2019. If you do sign it, you're going to stay the same past 2019, or where you're at.
Okay. And I then read, one of the letters says something about submit Exhibit B with my letter of non-annexation. I did not get an Exhibit B. How hard is it to get an Exhibit B?
Mr. Stewart, make sure you get a copy of Exhibit B.
We'll make sure that you have that, as far as I have your contact information, I'll make sure to get the copy.
Okay. And that, that really pretty well terminates my presentation. I really feel badly about this annexation, and I know basically what the city is trying to do. They're trying to protect the city's establishment of what goes on on the corridor and within the, what do you call, extraterritorial territory that y'all have, but it sure dampens the property owner's rights. And I don't know if we'll be able to establish something or not. My, my children are still hunting out there, and that was, that is one of my big, there's five boys that hunt out there, and that's all they do is hunt dove. So anyway, thank you for, you're free to say it, but it very definitely could hurt me. And I, I really feel that the American people are having their freedom rights taken away by such things as this.
Okay, I don't really have a dog in this fight, but when I'm listening to people like Mr. Wapo and Keith and others who have already invested a lot of money in their infrastructure, their personal property, is there not a way to, and maybe I'm way off base here legally or whatever, but can there not be some sort of a reciprocal allowance somehow to offset some of the expense? Is that an unreasonable question?
So, a lot of the infrastructure wouldn't change. If you have septic and you're already there, you can still use septic.
But they're paying double, they'd be paying, they're going to be paying double, and like Keith said, for the services that they're not really participating in.
Well, they wouldn't be paying any fees for sewer or water because they wouldn't be connected to Florisville Sewer or Water if they're receiving it from Oak Hills or if they have a septic system. So they wouldn't be paying fees to connect to those systems?
Yet.
Well, even after the annexation? If they're not connected to Florisville Sewer, you wouldn't be paying the sewer bill? So you wouldn't be paying any of the fees associated with that?
Okay, I'm looking at Mr. Waters now, I'm really confused.
Well, you need to explain, if you already pay a water bill and you're going to be annexed and your ag exempt?
I am, yes.
You are only going to be paying your water bill to the company you're paying now, it does not double. If you have a septic tank, you're going to be using your septic tank, flushing your water down there, and you will never get a bill from Florisville Water unless your repair goes over 50%. The electricity is electricity, you pay that no matter what. So there is, wherever this double stuff's coming in, there is no double. This is the rumor that got out there. If you're paying water at Oak Hills or the other place, that's the bill you're paying. Florisville does not come in and say, "Oh, by the way, you're going to start paying more." That's not happening. You're just paying that one water and that one sewer bill. The difference is, you'll see our police department out there versus the county police department. That's it. There's no extra cost until you become residential, or if you want to zone it as a subdivision or build houses, you lose your ag exempt, then you pay different taxes. Until then, you pay the same tax.
Hi, my name is Jack Van Durin. My wife and I, we just bought some property about three years ago. It is on the south side, okay, of the 181. It addresses 126 US Highway 181 South, okay? Up in the cabinetmaker all my life, we had to leave the state we were in before, California, because of all the regulations they kept putting on us. It got stronger and stronger, to the point where most of my competitors started to cheat, and they always had to look over their shoulders to make sure they weren't getting caught. I'm not like that. I pay my taxes. I live according to the law. When I heard of this annexation, I just about died. When we first moved here to this beautiful city, I never heard of it before in my life. But we liked it, we drove through it, we checked it out. We checked out the piece of property that we wanted to buy. We found out I could build a shop on this piece of property, 3,200 square foot metal building shop, and I didn't have to pay any fees, not even the county. The county told me I had to get a permit to widen my driveway a little bit. I asked them, "Oh, boy, here we go, how much is that going to cost me?" You know what they said? Nothing. Wow, never heard that before. For the first time in my life, I'm 60 years old now, I can actually, on the 4th of July, celebrate our independence where we live now. I got a fireworks stand right across, right across the way from me. First time in 60 years I've been able to legally buy fireworks, and actually blow them off on my property, and actually invite the, the great police department with no fears. What freedom I had. I have, but I'm about to lose. I don't have ag. I have a neighbor that has ag, and he's in it too. He's got cows on his property, I never lived next to somebody who had cows before. I think it's great. My wife and I, we, we sit out in our backyard in the morning, we see those cows come up the fence, we love it, it's great. We don't mind the flies, we don't mind it. The animals are beautiful. I see great steaks. What's going to happen to us? What if our taxes are going to go up? We're not ag. I got a 3,200 square foot shop, I got my house right there, I got a really long drive to work, you know? 100 feet, by the time I get to my truck, I'm already at my shop. I live on a property. My understanding, it seems like if you own a piece of property and it's worth $150,000, your taxes are going to go up $500 or more. Well, we're over Yobadad. We just, we can't afford to pay more taxes. We're paying $2,700 right now a month, I mean a year, to the county, which is actually more than we were paying in California. That's where I came from. I gave up the beauty of those mountains. People see when they come to my house, they say, "Well, you've got such a great view." You ain't, you didn't see where we lived before. This is a beautiful place, and I don't want to have to move. And I don't want to have to shut down because I cannot afford to pay all these extra taxes. And what are the, what are the regulations going to be on me now? No more fireworks for me. I'll remind them again, I'm used to it, though I guess I just have to get re-used to it. You're taking away the freedoms I came here for, this beautiful state of Texas. We didn't know where my wife and I were going to move. We looked at a map, we looked at Kentucky, we looked at the states that were free. We moved here to this great state of Texas. We moved here to, to this piece of property, and we saw freedom. Freedom I remember when I was a child, back in the 50s. Now you want to take it away from me. Put yourself in my shoes, think about what you're doing. Think about what you're going to do to all these other people. I hear your answers to some of their questions, they walk away confused. Don't talk politics to these people, we are people. Speak language we can understand. Don't beat around the bush. Come out with the facts, tell them, your taxes are going to go up this much. Tell them, can I have ag? Tell them, be honest. I got three years, if this goes through, and I'm out of business. And I'm going to have to move, because I got used to freedoms again. Don't force me to move, please. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Please, council, sorry, I want to make this brief. I just wanted to reiterate the question I had before, because I don't think maybe it was articulate enough. The concern isn't if we're not using the utilities, we don't have to pay it to the city or for the, any utilities that we're not using. The question is, what happens to those people who aren't using the city utilities when the utilities are being paid for by taxpayer money? And we're forced to be, we would be forced to pay for those extension services, and even though we're not partaking in it, that was, that was my concern. So if you could maybe reply to that, and perhaps there's some sort of option that people who don't partake in that, they're given some sort of a reduced tax rate? Because I would only see that that would be fair, otherwise it would be taxation without representation.
Henry, if I may, so utilities are funded by the fees that people pay on, they're not funded by taxpayer money. So if you pay a water bill, if you pay that, if improvements are needed to be made to the water system, the water rates go up, or the sewer rates go up, or things like that, that's how those are funded. They're not funded out of taxpayer funds. So that's the, the difference on there. So, even though you're not, if you're not using the utilities, you're not paying for the utilities, that's the basic thing.
Okay, that makes it clear. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Would you like to kind of sum up, or?
Just a couple notes about kind of, about going forward from here. First of all, I appreciate everybody's time in getting to this meeting. I know it's a tough time of day to make things work, especially if you're coming home from work trying to take care of your family, so I do appreciate y'all making the effort to come out and talk to the council and talk to me about what your concerns were. Just going forward, we're going to have the second public hearing on the 22nd of June, it'll be at the same place, same format, same council, same consultant. So we'll be here on the 22nd. If you have further questions that you'd like to bring up, or maybe one of your neighbors that wasn't able to make it to this one would be able to make it to the 22nd, you can let them know if they don't know where you are. Also, moving forward, the, August 18th is the, technically the deadline for getting the, the non-annexation development agreements back into the city, and if you'd like to set up an appointment to discuss that ahead of August 18th, then please feel free to contact me on the, with the number provided. And then, also to let y'all know, the earliest date that the council would take action on the annexation would be August 26 of 2019. So that would be the earliest that it would take place, and the latest that it would take place would be September 24, also the fall of 2019, the beginning of football season. At any rate, that's all I had, again, I appreciate your time, and I understand Mr. Apache has a question or comments?
I wanted to ask you about the chimney fence that the city was supposed to put out on that trail?
So, after this public hearing is over, if you'll give me an opportunity, because we can't discuss that during this public hearing specifically for the annexation?
I can't come over here.
We're not going to have you come, I'm not going to have you come again, I just needed an opportunity to visit with Ms. Turner about that, so I get some more information. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it is now 7:35 in the end of the, our public hearing on this item. Moving on to old business, consideration and action to approve the minute meetings for the regular council meeting of May 25, 2017. Council in front of you, in your packets, you've had the copy of the minutes. Hopefully you've had a chance to look them over. If you have any comments or suggestions or changes that you feel need to be made, please let us know. let us know.
I'll make them more simple to prove.
Okay.
Can I ask first if we could, like, the minutes, they only say CNA to approve ordinance 2017-008, can they...